If y'all will please stand for a moment and and then we'll have the presentation of colors from this school high school. JRRCC, so I'm going to try it.
And good luck to the wrestling participants. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to stand because I'm here for my presentation. So Irving's here at our board meeting tonight and who's made all these special accommodations for us to be here at school. And because it's the holidays, we're going to celebrate with a performance from the CDA choir. So they're going to perform for us. And Michael, if you will please share whatever video you take on that end with the rest of us so we can share it. And you all just go ahead with your ready.
Good evening. We are the CDA Charleston Development Academy Public Charter School Singing Eagles. And we've been excited about this invitation, looking forward to singing a melody and song for you. We'll begin with our simply Alleluia, followed by a very favorite song of mainstay of our school called "I Am His Child," and then he'll do a melody and Christmas tunes. Our "I Am His Child" soloist is Jasmine Anderson. "Mary Did You Know" by Sarai Brown. And Silent Night, Olivia Singleton. Enjoy. "I Am Yours Truly," Mrs. Brown, hard for a friend.
I may not be all that you are. I may not be a shining star. Love what I am. Oh, thank God it's true. I may not be all that you are. I may not be a shining star. Love what I am. I thank the Lord for making me shine. Thank you, Lord, for hearing every prayer. Thank you all for just being there. Thank you all. Thank you all, for I am worthy of your love. I may not be all that you are. I may not be a shining star. Love what I am. I thank the Lord for making me shine. So don't use me or abuse me, for I am a child. Don't tease me or mistreat me, for I am a child. You can even talk about me, but I still am a child. Dancing to the snow in one horse open sleigh. All the years we go laughing all the way. Ha, 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 the song of the day make spirits bright. But my ladies, you riders sing a sleighing song tonight. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. How the fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. How the fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Silent night, holy night. All is good, now is the time. Down to earth and mother and child. Glory is a tear. Sing, 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 sing. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy year. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy, happy year. And we wish you a merry Christmas. Mary did you know that your baby boy would one day walk on water? Mary did you know that your baby boy would save us sons and daughters? Did you know that your baby boy has heart to make you new? The child that you delivered was so deliver you. Mary did you know that your baby boy would give sight to a white man? Mary did you know that your baby boy would come a storm with his hands? Did you know that your baby boy had lots of angel shine? We kiss your little baby. You kiss the face of God. Oh, Mary did you know? The Bible speak, the devil hear, the devil's lamb again. The lamb will be, the dog will be, the presence of the Lamb. Mary did you know that your baby boy is lord of all creation? Mary did you know that your baby boy would one day rule the nation? Did you know that your baby boy is heaven's perfect man? The sleeping child you're holding is the great I am. Oh, Mary did you know? Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle bells run. Jingle bells swing, yeah, jingle bells swing. Snowing and blowing up with some fun. Now the jingle all the way. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle bells run. Jingle bells sound and jingle bells ring. Dancing and prancing and the jingle bells ring in the frosty air. What a bright time, it's the right time to rock your fire away. Jingle bell time, it's the swell time. Let's all ride in a one-horse sleigh. Get me up, jingle horse, pick up your feet. Jingle bells run along. A jingle and a jingle in a jingle and beat. That's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell run.
Thank you for letting us bring some Christmas spirit to you on this evening.
Wow, thank you. Thank you very much. And if anybody was not in the holiday spirit, you definitely are now. Y'all put a big smile on my face. Thank you very hard. We know how hard you all worked, along with doing your schoolwork, to be here tonight. So thank you very much and I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday. Bye-bye, y'all. Thank you very, very much. Okay, so. So the next item on the agenda after that wonderful performance is the adoption of our agenda and the approval of consent agenda items.
Move to adopt the agenda and approve the minutes.
Second. Can you identify the consent item?
I sure will. So we have a motion to approve in a second, but the consent agenda items, based on the feedback from you all, are going to be items from the committee of the whole meeting. 6A, which is the strategic plan. 6B, which is the Lucy Garrett Beckham grade configuration. And item 7B, which is policy JFAB, which is out of resident students. Is that correct? Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Lucy, my bad. Beckham comes on in the January meeting. So we just have two consent agenda items, which were the strategic plan and then policy JFAB.
Hey Kate?
Yes?
Are you reading that off of the board agenda? Because I don't think the numbers are lining up.
Okay. No, I'm looking at the committee of the whole agenda because it came from there. So the consent agenda items are the strategic plan.
Okay.
And policy JFAB. Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second. Todd made the motion and Ms. Reverend Mack seconded. Do we have any questions? So we're approving the agenda and the consent agenda items, and I'm going in the order that my little list is. But Mr. Hollingshed?
Come back to me for a second.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mr. Hollingshed?
Yes.
You voted yes on these two in the committee of the whole.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I was looking for something.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I included that in that.
No, you threw that in there. Okay, you're right, you did. So Portia, that was the adoption of the agenda, approval of consent agenda items, and approval of the minutes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of executive session items. And our numbers a little bit don't match up, so just go with me here. The first item that was on our executive session agenda was a student transfer for transfer number one.
I move to approve number 126.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All right. Mr. Hollingshed? Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes and the transfer is approved. All right, the next item on the agenda is, was number one. It was the contract.
Move to approve the contract for Clemson University to conduct a diversity study, create a comprehensive report, and suggested action plan.
Okay, we have a motion from Todd and we have a second from Reverend Collins. Do we have any questions? Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Excited about that. Number two is a contractual now where there's two charter schools, so we should do 2A and 2B.
Can we discuss the second charter school or just the first one?
We discussed both.
I move to direct the administration to send written notice to charter schools A and B as discussed in executive session.
Okay, yep, we can do it that way. All right, so we have a motion to direct the administration to send written notice to charter schools A and B as discussed in executive session. That's a motion from Todd. We have a second.
Second.
Cindy is seconding or Priscilla. All right, Mr. Hollingshed?
Question, question.
Yes?
I wanted to know if we could possibly get some of that data. I know we saw without possibility to get today, but we didn't see MAP scores or any other things. And if I'm not mistaken, the charter schools have until December to produce their plan, their report, the annual report. And we do not have the annual report for this year yet.
Reverend Collins, just with the action that we're doing right now will give us an opportunity to get that in January?
I know that. So that's why I want to make sure is today's motion just to send a letter only?
Yep.
Send a letter only?
Yep.
Letter of intent?
A letter of intent, but it's a letter and so then we can, they can, we can all have a meeting in January with them and discuss our options. So we'll be able to do what you want to do. I know what you want to do.
I wanted to bring the annual plan. I want to see the MAP scores. I want to hear from the school first.
I took notes on all of that in executive session. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Hollingshed?
Name.
I'm sorry?
Name.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
No.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. All right, the next item is, all right, so we have 4A, B, and C. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Move to approve the funding reallocation.
Thank you. That's, okay, so that's number three. Approve the funding reallocations related to building programs as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Todd and Kevin?
Kevin seconded.
All right, Kevin?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. The next item is 4A, having to do with the contract for District 4.
I move to approve the contract as presented in executive session.
Okay, so we have a motion from Cindy and a second from Reverend Collins. Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. The next item is the contract for D9. Do we have a motion for that?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to direct staff to enter into an option contract in District 9. Motion and a second. All right, Mr. Hollingshed?
Name.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Reverend Collins?
No.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion fail. Four to four. The next item is 4C, which is the contract related to cellular equipment lease. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
So we have a motion to direct staff to enter into a contract for the cellular equipment lease. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Mr. Miller and Mr. Garrett. Okay, Mr. Hollingshed, how do you vote? Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Second.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. Last item.
I move to authorize the district council to settle the claim.
Okay.
What item number?
With the.
It was, it was other.
Other 4D.
Because it's number six.
It's 4.16 on the agenda.
Right there.
Oh, yeah, excuse me.
Okay, so number six. Number six, yeah.
Yeah, okay, number six. That's going to be fine. Yep.
Sorry, my second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
What was Todd's motion?
To tell them to settle the claim.
Okay.
As we discussed in executive session. All right, Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Todd made the motion.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Todd made the motion, I second.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First of all, I want to share four pieces of good news. The makeup days that were scheduled during Thanksgiving week went really smoothly. I commend the staff and principals at each of our schools who handled those days so well. As you know, many people had already made commitments to travel, to see family, and staff covered for one another. Our students attended well, so all of our worries about those days were unfounded. The second piece of information is that the fall parent conferences, where most parents got to see the student data dashboards, went extremely well. There were some glitches, so it's a learning experience that we will improve on for next time. But I thank all of the teachers for the hard work they did to make sure that those parent conferences went as the board had hoped. The data dashboards for all of the schools were prepared and issued. I don't think that Laura is here now, but I do want to commend the Office of Student Assessment for the tremendous work that they did pulling all those data dashboards together. And then finally, today, we've had the highest substitute fill rate almost ever. We had an 89% substitute fill rate today, and that is a huge improvement over what we were experiencing before the board adjusted the substitute salary. So on behalf of teachers, I want to thank the board for taking that action and thank our HR and finance divisions for so quickly implementing those changes. It made a huge difference. And then on the items that were listed for me, we've already talked about the strategic plan. Again, I will mention the three strategic priorities that I'm recommending the board consider are doing what it takes to have more, many more children reading by the end of grade three. Secondly, is doing what it takes to recruit, retain, and develop tremendously talented staff members in all aspects of the district's employment roles. And the third is to more equitably distribute resources, financial resources, the talent that exists in our district, and the amount of time that we give to children to learn. So those are my three big strategic priorities. And today, the board talked about the need to address the arts and the need to really look at the entrance criteria and processes for schools of choice. The principal presentations at the Strategic Education Committee meeting, in one of my one-on-ones with board members, Mr. Miller actually suggested that we begin having three or four principals come each time to talk with you about their data, drilling down to that student level, as the board has discussed several times, to see the detail of what's happening, with whom, where. And I think that the state's new accountability system that gives tremendous weight to moving the lowest scoring 20% of students in every school really gives impetus to focusing on the achievement of all children. So we will work with the chair of the SEC committee and the board officers to schedule those meetings. If we did only the committee, the whole meetings, and we did four principals per meeting, we could get through about half of our schools in a year. So we'll get feedback from the board about whether you prefer to do that twice a month or once a month. The next item has to do with the January workshops. You talked about the board's strategic priorities, which ought to be taken into consideration when you determine the goals that you want to discuss for the superintendent's evaluation and the format of our evaluation. Just a reminder that those dates were set at your last meeting, they're January 8. Just a reminder that those dates were set at your last meeting, they're January 8th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then on January 22nd, we had said 3:00 to 5:00, but I don't think that will work because that's a regular board meeting date, so we'll need to back that up and do 2:00 to 4:00 on January 8th and January 22nd. And we are going to invite and request all of our principals to attend those board workshops because you can't very well set strategic priorities and goals for one level of the organization without every site leader being there to hear the discussion and understand what the board's priorities may be. The other thing I want to mention is in trying to make sure that our board meetings run smoothly, that you have all the information that you need and that the staff knows ahead of time to bring it, we scheduled a one-hour call-in time this morning. So when you opened up your board packets, on the yellow page, there was the reminder that you could call in from 10:00 to 11:00 this morning, and we had key staff members on the line to answer your questions. That's the second time we've done that, and no one has called either time with advanced questions. So we may try that one more time, but if we're not running our meetings more effectively because we've answered questions ahead of time, then it's not a good use of staff time. So.
I'd ask if you give us one more time because I think we really are just getting aware of it, and we can remind folks to do that. Hold on just one second. Chris Dobbs called in. Sorry, I'm interrupting in your. Chris, you called in. What did you want to, we've already, what did you want to do?
All right, so I understand that we can. I put that on the guest. I put my favor up.
Okay, so you wanted to vote, you wanted to vote the same way you voted in the committee of the whole meeting?
Number nine?
Okay.
Can't do that with the motion number.
I know, I know, I'm just making myself note of it.
My fault, it was about the.
Okay, I'll call you later. Thanks.
It was a good timing, it was a good idea, but Monday morning, everybody's kind of busy getting ready to get here and stuff, and we've got time to stop and work on it, but I think another day during the week would be a good time, but not Monday, not Monday before the board meeting.
So we get, we get things on Wednesday. Do people look at them on Thursday or Friday?
I look at mine, but I don't know, that's different days, I have my work schedules. But Monday before the meeting is almost the worst time because there's so much to do before I get here. So I can only speak for me, but that's a really busy time for me.
Okay, well, so why don't we talk about what would work between now and our, in our January meetings?
Okay.
Madam Chair, for clarification, did Chris cast a vote?
He was trying to cast a vote, but he, I said we'd already voted. But he was saying he was trying to vote the same way he voted, so I just.
We didn't, we didn't know everything yet.
No, you're right, he, no, because he's going into a performance for his daughter. He was trying to get in to do that. Okay, I'm sorry, Dorina, we interrupted.
That's all right. I think I understand the board would like us to try the call-ins one more time, but the board members need to confer and determine the most convenient time for board members. And frankly, Reverend Collins, if Friday afternoon would be better for you, that would be fine for the staff if you'll let us know. I think Saturdays and Sundays are probably.
I think maybe Thursday or Friday.
If you'll let us know what would be better for you than Monday, we will try our best to accommodate. And then the financial report was in your packets. If you have any questions, Kelly Meyer is here, as is Jackie Carlin. So for those who have not yet met Jackie Carlin, she's sitting there by Kelly in the audience. Welcome.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions on the financial report or anything under the superintendent's report? So follow-up for us, the January workshops, make sure those are on your calendar, and then we need to talk about if we think it's worthwhile to have the staff available on a Friday or a Monday by phone so you can call and ask questions.
It may work out better if you have a point person.
We have point persons now, and we're not, we're clearly not calling and asking them.
I mean.
Or some people are, but.
I know we had, I know we had the information request, but I mean, if we have a point person we can go to, or we can call, and they can have, get them down, they can come back and get back two looks.
What the phone call is, is calling the person who, yeah, they're.
Well, she's saying, you said staff available, got time for one hour. I don't know how to settle one hour. If you have a point person, they can ask the staff member, they can get back with us with email or phone calls.
Oh, a difference.
Yeah, just a difference, there's no time to staff an hour. Just give us a point person, they can send our question in, they can give us an answer, but if they can't.
Okay, well, the point, the point person, tell me if I'm wrong, the point person is the person that's listed on the committee of the whole board agenda.
And they're on the phone.
So you can, you can, you know, email them after you get your agenda back. Okay? All right, anything else for the superintendent?
I stepped out of the room, but did the superintendent discuss when we would start the presentations from the principals and how often?
Since Mr. Miller stepped out.
I suggest they will start in January, and I talk about the fact that if we do four per committee of the whole meeting, that gets at most 48 per year. And I pose the question whether the board wants to hear four at committee of the whole and then another four on board meeting day. That is yet to be determined, but the first four will go on January 8th.
Okay, sounds good.
That's great. So we need, I mean, realistically, I think it's an awesome idea. I don't know that we can do four and four. I think if we could start with four a month first, or?
Well, I think when I mentioned to the superintendent, the goal in my mind was to have a report done by each school heard by the board within the year.
Okay.
So the only way to do that is to do it at least twice a month, one in the, once at the committee of the whole meeting, and then once at the board meeting. You might not have to do four at the board meeting, maybe do three or two or whatever.
Right.
Or maybe we could reduce the amount of time in which the principals speak. If they, if they get their presentations in advance, they can potentially email us the information ahead of time so we can then review it. If we have questions, we can possibly send it to them, and they can cover that in the presentation. But I think hearing from the principals firsthand would be a good thing for us to be a part of.
Great. Madam Chair, I just, I think the board needs to discuss that just a little bit because I agree, I attended the all-day at the end-of-the-year event, and that is very, very informative. But if we set something that says four principals at each meeting, you're going to have 12 principals talking to you when school's not in session. You're going to have sixteen principals talk to you in the first six weeks of school when there's really not anything going on. And I think what we want to do is maybe decide what information we want from the principals on a regular basis and coordinate it with the school year rather than have someone lucky enough to be presenting in January and giving us actual data for that year, and then somebody's presenting in October, and they don't get to do the same thing because the data doesn't exist yet.
I was going to send Dr. Postaway an email and tell her that I was going to. I know what I would like to see as far as data is concerned, so I was going to send her possibly a template of what some of the things would be.
Absolutely. The question would be is what do you do for the principals who present in September when the data that we're asking for doesn't exist yet?
Right.
Why don't we start with draft your template and send it in, then we'll go from there. Keep going.
Gotcha.
Okay. Visitor and public comments. We don't have all of our technology, so.
Right, we have one public comment, Dawn Kaser.
Dana, is she here? There's no reason.
Okay.
Okay. If she comes back here.
We're good, move on. We did what.
You did a good job, Reverend.
Thank you so much.
Good job. Okay. So, all right, so just bear with me here, since we already, we did this earlier today. So committee reports from the Strategic Education Committee. We approved the strategic plan and the consent agenda items, and the Beckham High School will be on the January agenda, right?
Yes.
So we don't have any other action items from SEC, right?
Right.
Okay, so.
So to be clear, what did we approve when we approved the agenda?
We approved the strategic plan.
Actually, board meeting?
The strategic plan.
For the 18, 19 school year.
No, it's a five-year strategic plan.
So we approved the five-year strategic plan for the district?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and then we, this is what we approved. This document right here, and, yes, we've approved that in our committee of the whole end here.
Okay.
All right.
Six, seven.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Gotcha.
Okay, and then under policy and personnel, so we.
Do we need to load again on the first reading?
On the, I'm sorry?
On the first reading?
On the, no, we'll do the first, oh, on the first reading of.
Policy B E D M is being brought to the board meeting under the regular item. Policy J F A V was approved as a consent agenda item when the agenda was approved.
So I move to approve policy, the first reading of policy B E D M.
And that's a communication, electronic participation in board meeting, right?
Right, so Todd, Todd made a motion to approve policy B E D M. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Ms. Coats seconded, so.
Question.
I have a question.
Collins has a question, and then Michael?
Yes. I'm really concerned with the language of this policy. Like I mentioned earlier, that board members have to call in at least a day in advance, 24 hours' notice, when we want to make a telephone call into a meeting. Not long ago, Ms. Jeffrey called in, and others, Collins called in meetings, Chris just called in now, and obviously, I mean, we kind of stifle board members' participation if they do want to call in, but they have something important to do that day. You speak, you have an emergency, but it shouldn't be that I have my toe cut off in order to get approved to have, to have participation at a meeting. And so, so I'm asking us not to approve this policy because it shouldn't require us to have a board approval by someone, we don't know who the person is, that's going to, that's going to set, excuse me a minute, that's going to set the reason for you not calling in to justify your emergency. Say, okay, we accepted this emergency, we don't, we don't know who that is, whether it's going to be the lawyer, superintendent, or board, the board's going to vote on it? It's not clear. And I just, I really just, I think it's a waste of time to present that to the board at this time, because it's even matters where they are.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
When I, when I read the, when I read the policy, I first asked myself, is someone among the nine of us abusing was already the practice of us being able to call in or use electronic devices to participate in our meetings? To my knowledge, no one is abusing technology to participate in meetings. So the issue then becomes one to 24-hour notice because things happen, but outside of that, you have to then get permission from other board members for one of us to participate in a meeting in which we want to participate in, we're just not physically there to do so.
Only for executive session?
Only for executive session.
Even, I mean, I've been, and I can say this because I've called in for executive session before. It didn't, it wasn't something that I planned to do, but things happened, and I, luckily, I was able to participate. I would hope that in the future, that if any one of us comes up with extenuating circumstances, that we would have the ability, because in executive session, as we all know, nobody votes in executive session. We listen to conversation, we discuss the issue as it is, as the information is presented. So if, for the most part, if it's just a listening session for the person who's on the electronic end, then why wouldn't that be permitted, why wouldn't that be allowed for one of us to do that, is my question.
Okay, can I answer a couple of those things?
Yes.
One, Reverend Collins, because I'm going to answer a couple of questions. For joining the, a board meeting like we're in right now via electronic, nobody has to approve that. It just says you have to have an extenuating circumstance, and you're supposed to know by, I think, 24 hours. And this, again, is a first reading, so I think Natalie's intent, when we started talking about doing this as a policy, is she said she thought we needed a policy, whether we were going to allow it or not allow it, that we needed a policy. And she did research and found that the majority of the other school boards, particularly those boards of our size, did not allow people to call in at all. So that, that's why she felt like, okay, let's move forward with the policy. You know, to be perfectly candid, and I'll say something here that lots of us know, one concern I have with somebody joining, and I've called in before too, is the lack of confidentiality, particularly when it relates to executive session. And we know we've had items, we know we've had items that have been discussed in executive session that people have broken that confidence. So that's why I was supportive, I was supportive of us just having a policy because I think we need one, we need a policy whether we say we allow it or we don't allow it, we just needed a policy to define it so we don't have a situation where somebody comes in and says, no, you can't do that. We can say, yes, we do, we have a policy. So that's why I think we need a policy. And it is first reading, so if we want to make some, we don't, this isn't approving it forever, it's, we could approve it and then make whatever changes somebody wants to make to it. Yep, Reverend Collins?
The other problem I have is that it requires us to have an affidavit to be filed with the board secretary, to file affidavit.
If we, just for executive session.
But it doesn't say that, it doesn't say that at all. If this recall, this says to participate.
Okay, so that, so that, all right, so let me ask you a question.
Let me finish first.
Okay, so that, you don't like the affidavit?
The only part, the only part that speaks about executive session.
Is the last.
The last part, the rest of it talks about board meetings in general, and all in applies that you must have an emergency, you must get 24-hour notice, and it must be submitted to the chair by the superintendent. So if you've got a child in school, an emergency came up the same day, they're talking, they're getting sick, you've got to get a doctor, that's still outside of, that's outside of 24 hours. So we cut ourselves off. I mean, why are we doing this ourselves, I mean?
Okay, Ms. Coats and then Mr. Hollingshed?
Well, to be fair, because Ms. Hamm could not be here tonight, she is making an attempt to follow the board directive that was given by some board members when they were not happy with her response to calling into a meeting. And she said that, she said this in September, that if my response drew such a negative, a negative reaction from board members who wanted to know if, who's pushing this, who's saying yes, who's saying that she can say yes, or who's saying that she can say no. She wanted to create a policy that would, that would be a board-driven policy that would never put her or the staff in that position again. She did deny initially some folks the opportunity to call into an executive session because she had legal concerns about the confidentiality. I really, I've never missed a meeting that I had wanted to call into, so I really don't have a feeling one way or the other, but I want to make sure that we don't lose sight that this was an employee who worked very hard to hear board members who were sending emails and text messages and all sorts of communications at their displeasure of her ability to make that decision. If we take this off the table tonight, that's fine, but let's remember that somebody has to make that decision, and if we don't want it to be in the attorney's hands, the board needs to make something that puts it in our hands.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingshed and then Reverend Mack?
I just think this is a bad idea at this point in the juncture. I'm not going to rehash what transpired in the past. I think we dwell on stuff too much. But let me just say this, though, I think Ms. Hamm does a great job in her position. Um, but let me just say this though, um, I think Ms. Hamm does a great job in her position, but, as I said before, the board has to establish itself separate from staff, so therefore the board has to have its own attorney. Um, if we have our own attorney, our own attorney acting to behalf of the board, and we all work together cohesively to do something, then I think it works out. But I think you're trying to put her in the fray of things, and I have to take up for her, because I don't want her in the middle of this, this is the issue that the board has to deal with. So I'm not for this particular, um, motion, I think in the, at this point in the juncture, uh, we need to delay it, and then maybe we can sit down and talk about maybe crafting something later, but as Michael said earlier, you, you never have an intent to call in, something happens, things happen in life, and we should not be able to restrict a board member when it comes down to deal with an issue that's dealing with taxpayer dollars and pregnant information that deals with our district. So that's something I think we need to revisit a little bit later, and I think right now, during the holidays, is not the time to even deal with that.
So Madam Chair, may I...
Hold on, hold on, Reverend Mack was next, sorry, and then Dr. Postaway has, I'm sure, a point of...
Okay, so, so there was already a, a motion and a second on the floor for approval, uh, but I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that motion, that, uh, we send it back to the committee to hold for further discussion.
So we have first reading and then send it back?
Yes.
Okay, so have first reading?
Our second, Chris.
So Todd and Cindy made the motion in second, and Reverend Mack's suggestion is we, we do first reading tonight and send it back to the committee of the whole.
May I make a clarifying statement?
Reverend Mack, your first reading?
Yes.
Reverend Mack, to be clear, that is, this came to you guys in Jan, in September, and there was no discussion from the board between September and December, it was tabled. I think that if this is something that the board is not ready to address, or isn't, is it pleased with this, we need to vote it down so that it doesn't have to sit out there by policy, keep waiting for us to edit it, and we can just start over.
Okay, but wait.
I'm just trying to make it a little bit cleaner, that it is voted down.
But let me ask a question, ask a question, because we had enough votes to move it forward to this, why, I don't understand why we can't, we take a lot of policy...
Well, if we call the vote to, to, that's exactly what I'm saying, we need to vote up or down on this, and then if it, if it does fail, then we can create a new one from scratch.
But if it does pass, for those people...
Then we can edit it as we do.
Hold on a second, if it does pass, then we can edit it between now and our second reading.
Follow the normal procedure.
Follow the normal procedure, which we do all the...
But to table it puts us in a position of Natalie's trying to keep these loops in clear.
All right, hold on one sec, okay.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking, I'm not asking to table it, all I'm saying is that we've had the discussion earlier, and now we're in lengthy discussion now, so all I'm saying is to approve it now, the first reading, send it back to the committee to hold and clean, and clean up whatever language that other board members may have, because we've, we've been talking about this the last several months, but now we've only got into in-depth discussion now, so let's clean up the language at the next committee to hold, and then we can move forward, but board, board members need to submit those changes before the next committee of the whole meeting, so that those languages can be edited inside the...
Let's edit it now, let's edit it now.
Hold on, hold on.
No, 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 I don't want to edit it now, we're spending too much time.
You will have to edit it now.
Go ahead. Dr. Postaway?
Thank you. We, we need for the board to establish a policy on this, so that the staff knows how to support you when, when you ask for our support. It doesn't matter to us, if your policy is one sentence long, the first sentence reads, "The board allows its members to participate by electronic or other means of communication, such as telephone or video teleconferencing, in the board's public meetings, provided such participation is not disruptive to the proceedings." If that were your policy, that would be fine with us, then there wouldn't be any questions, and the staff...
That's fine, we can live with that, yeah.
And when you have, when you have staff turnover, what happened this summer was a new staff member whom the board chair turned to for advice, called the shot differently than an old staff member, and, and some board members thought that, that the decision that was recommended was based on something other than that, so if you'll approve it on...
Read what you're saying again?
I just read it, I just read the first sentence, it doesn't matter to the staff what policy you set up, but if you had a policy, we could implement it without you thinking, without your thinking that we were playing by...
Michael, Mike, Michael's next. Michael?
Well, Dr. Postaway just gave us a great segue out of this. If she hadn't made that statement, my comment would be, as board members, we're asked to serve, and it's our, and it's part of our due diligence to have as much information as possible prior to voting on issues. If we're provided information in executive session that helps us generate, helps us generate knowledge to vote, if one of us is unable to participate in executive session, what other methods will be provided to the board to gain the information that we did not receive if we could not call in? If there's no metric in place to do that, then how can you ask board members not to call into executive session, and then turn around and say you can participate in open session and vote when we weren't privy to the information that's required to vote? So if Dr. Post, so if Dr. Post awaits, um, if her, if her friendly suggestion passes, then we don't have to worry about that. If it does not, then how do we get information that we're supposed to use to vote on if we can't get that information and then ask to vote on in open session? Guys, it doesn't make any sense.
Okay, all right, Reverend Collins and...
All right, Reverend Mack. If we are trying to approve, it's the first paragraph only, first paragraph, I don't have a problem with that. Dr. Post, Dr. Post was reading, I mean, I can really with the, the whole first, first paragraph, it was going to talk about emergency, medical, military service, restraints, I mean, I can live with that first paragraph, that's, that's pretty good, engineering, stop it, stop it as something, but to put all this stuff in it, it would really create havoc.
Okay.
Well, there, there is already a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Can we amend your motion to, 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 can we amend your motion that only approved the first paragraph?
Well, the motion is Todd and Cindy's motion.
He said yes.
All right, I'm fine with doing that.
We'll make it as a friendly amendment.
As the first reading, a friendly amendment, we're approving the policy with only the language from the first...
First paragraph, okay, so we have, we're, we're friendly amendment, Cindy, are you okay with that? So basically, we're, we're amending the policy to have first reading with just, sorry, I'm writing on Dr. Postaway's copy, the first paragraph, right? Okay, we ready to vote?
And I, I would say that for the edification of the board, it will follow the normal first and second reading procedures, which is it will be discussed at the next committee of the whole prior to coming back for second reading.
All right, Mr. Hollingschmidt?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And Ms. Darby?
Oh, that's me, and I vote yes, and I'd like to point out that that's a time where we really work together cohesively on something.
Is that on camera?
Let's keep practicing.
The next item on the agenda is policy IKA, which is, this is second reading of policy IKA, it was came to us last month, um, this is an upgrade in the language based on a review by the School Boards Association, okay? Todd, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Hollingschmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the motion passes.
Madam Chair, on the community task force, can I move to approve D nine, but not D twenty right now?
Second.
Yeah, so just say what your motion, what the motion is you want to make.
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve the D twenty-three task force committee being set up, not the D twenty...
Okay, so the motion is to approve, to set up a D twenty-three school community task force committee, similar like we've done in D nine before. Reverend, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Question?
Yep, hold on, Kevin had a question first, all right, Todd made the motion, and...
And the reason I was taking D twenty off of there was just because I initially put it on there, it's a good idea, if area, I didn't have enough, uh...
Time to work on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Kevin, you had a question, and then I think Michael has a question.
So Todd, who's been extended to task force?
What's that? That's, uh...
Reverend Mack?
Yeah, I know, but I mean, but you were initially...
I initially wanted to do it to look at D twenty as well, but I don't have any, anything for it to move forward on right now.
So Reverend Mack...
Do you want to do, a while ago, I'm not now, but I mean...
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, all right, Mr. Miller?
So, um, question, is this an attempt to have these school community task forces throughout all eight or nine constituent districts? Or, I know we did one for District Nine, we're looking at here twenty and twenty-three, so are we going to go district-wide with these? And if we are not, why not? And what are the goals, what are the goals of doing and creating such a task force?
So right now, we're just looking at doing D twenty-three, not D twenty, because we're, the motion was just for D twenty-three. My personal opinion is that I think over time, we probably will do each area, and for example, in D two, in the, we've already done some of those in the past before I got on the board, um, and so I think that'll be, I don't think we can do them all at one time for a staff, from a staff standpoint. Reverend Mack can speak to what we're trying, what they've talked about doing for, the focus for D twenty-three.
Okay.
Reverend Mack?
So, so let me just first say, this was an, uh, an, an approach to look at improving the academic options that are offered out of D twenty-three, which is Hollywood, which is a rural area, and looking at how we can improve upon those academics and within those schools. It is a very remote area, uh, and schools are spread far apart, uh, so the condensed area over there is not a building population, so how could we look at, at the numbers that are in those schools, the choice options that are offered in those schools? We know numbers drive what, what can actually be offered in schools or compared to other schools, or if you have a thousand students, you're able to...
You can't hear, we can't hear because it's the pushback.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, we, when you look at the number of students in some of these schools, uh, they have somewhere, I think Mini Hughes have like two-hundred-and-so-much students, EB Ellington, four-hundred-and-so-much students, uh, I think Jane, is it Jane Edwards?
Jane Edwards.
Have like less than a hundred students. You have Baptist Hill and, um, high and middle combined together, so, so, but you don't have what's called a building population like you now have in D nine, to where your numbers are going to fluctuate. So over there, uh, they have low-dense numbers, and so the, the idea is, is to bring the community together and say, how can we look at, uh, the options that we have, and what can we do to improve upon them? So this is what really this study is all about, uh, and the best way to do that is to have the community have the buy-in, the stakeholders, to participate in that process.
All right, Ms. Coates has a question?
And this is not a question, I support this because, first off, Mr. Miller, this came from the board, a board member, not the staff, so the staff doesn't have any preconceived notion, they can't answer that question.
Correct.
But I want to remind the board, and it may be something that we have to have, Porsha do for us, but there is a formal policy that outlines what a school community task force is in terms of its membership and, and how it's set up, and I'm asking Reverend Mack, is that what you're asking, that we follow that policy that was created in two thousand and fifteen for how these are done?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a call for questions, so the motion is to create a D twenty-three school community task force, all right? Mr. Hollingschmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the motion passes. Um, before we get to other agenda items, Mr. Miller, you wanted to bring something back up or discuss something else?
Oh, yeah, I was like, it was the, the, the D nine contractual matter?
Oh, bless you.
I bless you.
Yes.
I was under, when I, when I cast my vote, I was under the impression that the recommendation for the three additional acres was locked in, not an option. Jeff, is that an option?
Our intention is to go to the contract, to not give them any forms, and to hold them off, we will come back and tell you that's a tough one.
Okay, well, that's the case, and I'd like to change my vote.
Doesn't lock us into hanging.
Okay, okay, gotcha, well, then I'd like to change my vote if I could.
Okay, all right, so then you...
So it's five, three?
Yes, sir, no, it was four, yes, so nor, it was four, four, so, but you want to do that because you had, you didn't have the correct information?
Right, because I was under the, right, because I was under the impression that that was a locked in with, with the original, with the original contract that we were looking at acquiring the land, and that additional land would, would be an additional, whatever, so.
Okay, Mr. Hollingschmidt, do you have a vote, I mean, do you have a question, I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, and I understand and respect this vote, changing the vote, I just wish that we would look at, in that area, some other land standalone, or future schools, rather than tied into a subdivision, so I just think that we need to be careful with that.
Well, if I can answer that, you know, the, the population on John's Island is, is definitely growing tremendously, and to actually buy fifteen acres of property will definitely cost us way more.
Yeah.
Twenty times more than what we're talking about right now. So this in itself is prime, it doesn't lock out any individual that lives out on John's Island, the D nine community, so this is definitely something that, that we would want to capitalize on, is like trying to buy property in the city of Charleston.
And, and I'm with you, I'm with you about the school situation out there, future schools, I just have a thing about buying into a subdivision, um, we did that with a couple other projects in Charleston County, and I just think that if we're going to buy land out there, we can do a standalone, and then let everything else develop around us, I just don't think we should be going in with a developer out there, I think we can go, I'm with you on finding a piece of land, I just want you to be our own, our own initiative.
I see the same.
All right, okay, any other questions about that? So, Porsha, did you get that, that for item, um, during executive session four, point four B for D nine, Mr. Miller changed his vote to, okay, all right?
Good job.
Oh, wait, hold on one second, yes, Reverend Hall?
We do other business land?
We are, we already did that, we already did that.
All right, uh, I wanted to know if we could, uh, a lot of, some of us went to the high school state championship football, singularity championship about a week ago, Baptist Hill played, uh...
You were there?
Lamore, you know, I was there, and, uh, I mean, the one side of the stadium...
I know me and Mike was on the sideline, where you were.
She was there, she was, she was there.
Thank you.
But I didn't know, I didn't find out, but listen, uh, that one side, the other side was filled with people in Charleston, I mean, I couldn't believe the whole times I was filled up, but I want us to recognize those students of the football team, they didn't have money to buy uniforms, and someone's trying to raise, Dr. Frager's trying to raise money to assist them with the uniforms, but I want to know if we can also give them, uh, some type of trophies or plaques, but they put a value, they scored first, they're leading, and they're, they're playing against a team that had been to the championship several times already.
So what, I mean, so we don't have a, you don't have a specific recommendation, let's talk about what that, bring that back to you.
I want us to present them with something in their future, and recognize them for that great achievement, because our teams don't go to state championship in general, they play against a really good team.
Okay, all right.
And that's about, about a fourth quarter, I've always had gotten together.
Mr. Hollingschmidt? Okay.
Now, just, um, and speaking earlier with Madam Chair, um, that is a great achievement, we have not had a team make it that far in twenty-five years of history of Charleston County, um, but I also think the bigger, the bigger states are here, that I wrote a note to Madam Chair earlier, I think we need to look at our overall athletic system in Charleston County, and see about what it needs to tweak and make it better. We lose about fifteen thousand dollars per student going to Dorchester and Berkeley County, where families chase the dream over there, and I think we need to improve our system, and we need to take a page from Baptist Hill, they have had their system drawn to West Ashtree and other areas, and they managed to put together a team out there that, that did a phenomenal, um, um, thing. So again, um, I think we need to have that discussion, and I think that's a great thing, but again, Chris, I can agree with what you said.
All right, two, two quick things, one, I just want to thank the staff who made all this happen, we, I mean, it's a lot of work for us to come out here and thank, I think there's a nice, wonderful gentleman with some really good food in the library, if anybody's still hungry, and lastly, board members, um, I would just ask, as we end